The agenda for a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Poplar Bluff, Missouri to be held on Monday, March 2nd, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation by Minister Adam Knowles of Green Forest Church of Christ, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance by Ralph Ennis, VFW Post 6477.
Let's pray. Dear God, our Father, we're thankful, Lord, for this day, thankful, Lord, for the good weather that we enjoyed earlier in this day. It's another reminder of your blessings over us, and we pray, Lord, that you will bless us and bless this community as we go forward. We pray, Lord, that you will be with the City Council tonight as they make decisions, that they will be decisions that are selfless, that are for the betterment of our community, help them make the hard decisions, and give them courage and boldness to do that. We pray, Lord, for our community, for those who are protecting our community, such as our, our police officers. We pray for those who are emergency caregivers and like our EMTs and our nurses and, and our firefighters. We pray, Lord, for our children, that you will help us to be a good influence on them, to raise them, to be good citizens of this community, and we pray, Lord, that you will continue to bless us, be with us each day. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson, here. Councilman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Cornman.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Young.
Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Hearing none. Item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. First, we have Mr. Robert Durbin. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Robert Durbin. I live 1609 North 13th Street here in Poplar Bluff. I, first of all, I appreciate the chance to speak, perception, the way that people see the City of Poplar Bluff, the government in particular. I was, I was going through the city's website this past week, and I noticed that the City Hall had posted for a new executive for the downtown corporation. I was reading through, I do not want the job. I have no interest at all. I was reading through the qualifications for, the requirements for the job, and it reads, I'll just paraphrase, five years degree in some kind of business management, some kind of, something like that. Me personally, whenever I read it, I read it like this city government has already picked someone and wrote it specifically for that person. And that's the way a lot of stuff that goes on in Poplar Bluff comes off to the public. Whether it's meant to be that way or not, the Internet use tax, it's been pushed several times, and this time, I, I don't have anybody's, my, I'm not a mind reader of any kind, but it comes off to me as a threat to either approve the use tax, or we're going to cut services. If that's not what it's meant to be, then the public should be better informed. If we want to pass this use tax, the citizens of Poplar Bluff see the Shelby Road issue as a mismanagement of the tax money that you're already getting. If you wish to get the use tax, let's do away with the Shelby Road issue. The citizens of Poplar Bluff do not see it as being two separate forms of money, I think call it capital and general fund. The public doesn't see it that way. They see a million dollars being just thrown away out on Shelby Road with no purpose in mind. Originally, we were told it was for the City Hall, and the police department was going to go there with the possibility of the fire department and some other uses along the way, green space and stuff like that. The City of Poplar Bluff cannot afford to be spending a million dollars and fifty, a million fifty dollars on a piece of property for more green space. We can't maintain what we got now. We're reaching out, we're going out to the edge of the city limits, right? Everybody keeps saying the city's moving that way. Well, I live in the City of Poplar Bluff, and I don't see it that way. If people want to move out there and, and go to an unincorporated area and start up a new city, I would welcome that. But the City of Poplar Bluff cannot keep extending our boundaries and giving tax breaks to people and then depriving the people that are already here of the resources that we have to go out there. So I see a couple of big problems in Poplar Bluff. The old City Hall asbestos issue, they tell me it's got to be dealt with, right? Been kicking it down the road for what, 12 years? Come on, really? We're going to blow a million dollars out there? We're going to give $600,000 to a consulting firm to make a decision for us that we're not man enough to make for ourselves? We all know what's best for us. We are Poplar Bluff. It's us. We are Poplar Bluff. So let's go in and take the money and do the asbestos, do the demo on that, do the demo on the children's building that we bought, the old Firestone Building. It was a unanimous decision of everybody here that we was going to buy that property, and that was what we was going to do there. And now it's, it's like you got ADHD. Nobody's, nobody's paying attention. It keeps bouncing around. You keep moving from one spot to the other. Nobody's finishing up what they started. The asbestos issue, this demolition of the City Hall on Second Street, it's got to be done at some point. We keep kicking it down the road. It's going to happen sooner or later. We've got to deal with it. The old parking garage downtown, been there for 40 years, I've heard it has to be demolished. I don't know. I'm not an engineer. But let me put a different perspective on it. There's been downtown, there's been Shelby Road, people taking up groups or whatever, it's like east side, south side, whatever. I'm for Poplar Bluff. I want what's best for Poplar Bluff. So the city police department is already using the parking garage there on Second Street. Can't we build above there for the police department? Demo what we have to, do the asbestos issue over there. We go down to the, the old parking garage. This town holds near and dear, there are brick streets, right? That's on Broadway, Brick Street, right? We got columns that we took out of the old post office that are setting up at the museum of the old Mark Twain. Let's bring it all back together. Let's bring Poplar Bluff back together. Let's bring the columns down, make it the facade for the new City Hall. If we have to demo it or build on top of the old parking garage, fine. It's got to be a lot less money than going and spending a million dollars out here on Shelby Road for something we don't need, can't afford to maintain. The, the property out there has no value to the Poplar Bluff at all, at no price. Bring it back to Poplar Bluff. Let's all come together. There's, there's no rush to do this. Wait for the election. If you don't want to make the decision, leave it to somebody else. Why put Poplar Bluff a million dollars in debt that April 7th, that may change? Can't we just wait till after that? Is it that big a rush that we have to push it through? Come on, guys. This is Poplar Bluff. We are Poplar Bluff.
Thank you, Mr. Durbin. We have Mr. Spencer Jones.
Spencer Jones, 903 Carfield, North Carfield. I wasn't here last month. I was on a cruise and couldn't make it, but several other people made it, and I've been in touch with them. I haven't done a lot, but I did call a couple of representative because, as you know, that we have been working diligently on endeavoring to get the Highway 60 from the courthouse down to CVS Street to 60 and King Drive, the two, the two can exist together. We don't have to take away the Highway 60. The guy who's in charge of the signs feel very favorable of that. And then I've made a commitment, a little different than the guy who was just here. I guess the reason why is that I'm moving here in about a half, half a year on a permanent basis. I'm always, already have the house, and I'm in and out of here all the time. And I, I travel all across America, and I tell people about Poplar Bluff. And I don't think I've been to a city where somebody have not been through this city and around this city, and they, they, we're proud of the city, and I'm proud of the growth of the city, and I'm for the growth of the city. And anything we can do to see the growth of the city, I'm committed to that. In fact, I've committed five days of my personal time to come down and, and help talk to people verbally, because a lot of time, if people don't understand something, they're always against it. It's human nature. It's human nature, and if you don't understand it, you're against it. It's human nature that we don't want to make a change. It's human nature is that we don't make, want to make a sacrifice, but anything good and worthy is worthy of a sacrifice. And so I am for the sacrifice. I'm for it. I didn't know the other gentleman was speaking the way he did. There's, it has nothing to do with this. And I just tend to think what all of us need to do is commit ourselves to a lot of hard work, talking to people personally. When you talk to people personally about anything, whether it's, whether it's politics, whether it's race, I was in a church in Springfield, Illinois, and it's an all-white church where the pastor said, you know what, we need to talk about race. And when they raised that issue, white people get a little frightened about it. But this guy had done a phenomenal job of really sitting down and talking about that, and the people felt very relieved because what? We were open, we talked about it, we understood, they understood it, and they're ready to go to progress. And I just tend to think the tax system, that we have, the issue that you have here, will, will pass if we make sure that we do our job of getting the word out. We need to commit ourselves to pray. I'm committed to that. And basically, that's where I stand on that. I already had that written down. My goal with the day to call the chief, to find out what kind of progress he's making on the police issue. I will call him tomorrow. Basically, that's all I got to say. I just probably need a report from you guys, what you guys have done since we got it last.
I really just wanted to thank Mr. Jones because he, he did call City Hall this morning and wanted, what I've heard, a bucket full of the flyers for the use tax. And I talked to him before the meeting started, that we're actually trying to work on a new flyer to make it a little more simpler to understand, and I just appreciate your help on that. And been trying to work with MoDOT on the wording for the legislature to get the Memorial Highway done.
Agreed.
You know, working, working through a legislature sometimes can be cumbersome, but that's kind of where we're at right now.
Good. Well, if we need to call anybody, anybody we need to contact, please let us know because we all, again, we need to work together, and when people work together, they can get things done, but when we're apart, we can't. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, could I just ask that you might respond? Comment's been made tonight that there's a threat of cutting if the use tax doesn't pass. If that's ever been presented as a threat, I want to stand and say that wasn't the intention. It was an intention to inform of a fact.
Yes, sir. When I presented the budget, and it was not meant for, to be a threat, we've got a $283,000 deficit budget this year, and I went through the entire budget, and what I told you all the budget, tonight we discussed the budget, was, you know, municipalities, the first thing they have to do is protect their citizens, which is the police department, the fire department. We have to take care of our street, which is the street department, and then, of course, we have other departments that take care of a lot of things in the city. Those are necessary services for a city, for any city in the United States. And what I said was, we do have services that we offer that aren't, you know, they're nice to have. I mean, the pool, the fitness center, the art museum, those are items that bring people to Poplar Bluff. I know they help the city. They're, I think, what any city manager or city council would call a non-essential service. And what I simply stated was, in order to balance the budget, we really need to pass the use tax. If not, then those are areas we may have to cut. I didn't say we had to. I don't want to, but I never considered it a threat to the public.
Exactly.
I also said that, you know, we may have to take our police officers back to eight-hour shifts instead of 12-hour shifts. That was a savings of at least $90,000, so. But yes, sir, you're right. It never was meant for a threat. And anybody that knows me, I think they would know that I, I wouldn't do that, but...
And I'm sure you'd be glad to talk to any citizen in more detail about that. There's always confusion about the two funding of general fund and capital, and often we have the mixture and confusion of that as our citizens talk. I know you tried to address that publicly here and in articles in the paper, but if any of them would really like to understand that, I think any of us as council would, would make an attempt to, but you of all people could do the best job of really explaining those funds and how they have to work.
Yes, sir. And those funds, you know, they're capital funds mandated by law. That's all we can spend it on is capital improvements. We can't spend it on benefits or salaries or anything like that, so.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Item seven, workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council will discuss a recommendation for architectural services for the proposed police station building. Mr. Mascan.
Yes, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we had a committee set up to select an architect for the police department. We'd selected Police Facility Design Group and recommending that company to you all, and they are here tonight to do a short presentation of what they have to offer us. And at this time, I will just ask, and the police come forward, and they've got a slide presentation they're going to do for us.
This is Mr. James Estes, the principal with Police Facility Design Group.
Can you folks in the back see that?
Mayor, I'm, I'm sure that they would be welcome if they'd like to stand and come up here to see, they'd be welcome to make that.
Sure.
That would work better than...
Whatever works good for you. Maybe you'll see it there. Here, on the back. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
It's good we got your wheels.
Lighting, okay. Need to turn the front light on.
I see it.
I can't see it.
Yeah.
First of all, Mayor, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about your project. My name is James Estes, and I am with Police Facility Design Group. I'm the president, one of the owners, and we recently interviewed and were selected to perform the architectural services. I'm primarily here to answer your questions tonight, but I do have a short, about a 10-minute presentation, and I want to start with telling you a little bit about our...
Can he, can he just use my mic?
You can take that mic off if you need to.
Or set it on...
Lisa.
Put myself in the floor.
He can use that one.
Take it off, take it off.
While that hand, it may not go there. Just take the floor.
He's got it.
What, what I would like to tell you, what I think makes us different than a lot of firms, is that we do nothing but law enforcement projects. I believe that we bring unparalleled experience to this one project type. That doesn't make us special or unique, but the only project we do is law enforcement projects, and we work all around the country on this, on this one project type. We won't be back here to do a hospital or a school. We're here because it is a police project. The other thing that I think is important is ownership interest. I, I know we all, we all try to contact the big companies, our, our service providers for Internet and all types of different large companies that we deal with, and we never speak to an owner, right? Well, I'm here to tell you that as one of the owners, I will also be one of the faces involved with you on your project. So your level of satisfaction is going to stop at my desk. I'm responsible for that. I'm very involved in our projects, especially in the early critical planning and the design work. So for better or for worse, this is the face that you will see for a good portion of the early critical phases of the work. The other thing is, is honoring our commitments. Designing buildings is a very evolutionary process. Things are constantly changing. One of the things that we do is when we establish a fee, which we believe is a competitive and a fair fee, is we stick with it. We don't try to change our fee every time something on the project changes. You have to go a different direction with your project before we would, before our fee would be impacted. I've heard some of the issues here tonight. I understand those. I actually, I, I, we were in Kansas City. I grew up in a little town called Keene, Kansas, with about 3,000 people. I worked in my dad's supermarket. I understood the value of hard work. I understood the value of the dollars that everybody earns. I understand the commitment taxpayers make to a project and their concern for the wise use of their money. So I believe honor and commitment is something that I promise you, you, you will have from my firm and from me. A little bit about our firm, as I said, we're exclusively dedicated to this one project type. We've done over 300 buildings in this type, from the very early planning through construction completion. We design and plan based on national standards. And the reason we utilize national standards is we believe that planning for any building, but especially public buildings, should be based on something other than we just decided that's what we want to do. What we do is plan based on your specific needs, those needs of your department, but we're going to look at it in how it compares to what we would expect for departments built all over this country. So in other words, to deliver a certain level of public safety services to your community, there's kind of a norm for that that's utilized all over the country. And we will use those standards to determine what goes into this building. Again, it's going to be tailor fit to your specific needs, but it's going to be based on common models for design used in law enforcement facilities across the country. We believe that we can bring credibility when we can talk to the community that this is not just pie in the sky wishlist thinking. This is for the, for the delivery of the public safety services that they're bringing to their community. There's a basis for how we decided how much space it takes in a building to, to carry out that, that performance. Not only is it important to have big picture understanding of the project type as you plan it, it's also good to know the tiniest of details. A police building is a unique project type. It's a building that you're going to be in for 50 years, almost untouched. This building, once it's designed, once you're in it, you may very well be in it in 100 years if we have sufficient land that you can one day, maybe 40 or 50 years down the road, expand the building on. But in the meantime, the design of the building has to be durable. It's designed for one tenant so that you're not getting water infiltration and a slow deterioration of the buildings inside because we built the building cheaply. There's a lot of things related to security inside the building that, that also impact the cost, but knowing all these small details in the planning stage, when we make these decisions on paper, if we don't miss them, we minimize change orders that come with many, many large projects, and change orders are generally the result of oversights where the planners forgot to include something or other reasons that projects change, but we want to minimize that. And we certainly want to minimize change orders based on our performance. And the other thing that I want to say is that my firm not only designs facilities, we also, we also teach improper facility planning. We do this for communities all over the country. Twice a year in Kansas City, we have a seminar on successful facility planning, and we're the longest independent seminars for this project type. The thing that we bring to the project besides our experience is an understanding. If, if I come to you with all the experience in the world, it means nothing if I'm about building a monument to myself. Understanding comes from knowing what the owner's concerns and issues are. We say that we speak the language. What I tell the police departments we work with is that we don't know how to do your job, but we probably know how your facility can positively or negatively impact you better than, than even you do. So we understand from the very beginning, there is no learning curve on how do you design a proper law enforcement facility. As I said, I come from a small town. I'm sensitive to, to, to use of my taxpayer dollars. We, we just had a bond issue for multiple police facilities in Kansas City. I supported it. I did not do any of the project work on those projects, but I knew it was good for our community, and I, I understand that. We have to, when we are using taxpayers' dollars, we have to be able to justify. There has to be a reward or a benefit to spending those dollars, and I'll talk about that at the end of this presentation. We want to build consensus on what the building looks like. Long-term value is about not choosing the most expensive materials, but it's about looking at materials that are not necessarily the cheapest because we want materials that last for the longest period of time, that bring the best value to you. And then the other thing that I think we do by understanding this project type and, and standards for the project type built all around the country, is we can help the public with understanding the need by informing them as to the decisions that were made, and again, how it compares to departments built all around the country. I'm going to quickly talk about the process, and I'm going to cover these four things: program, planning, design, bid documents, and construction administration. And we're just going to hit the very highlights of it. Program planning is that very first step. It's creating the foundation for what this project will be. You all have a budget, and you've got kind of an idea of the size of the project. We have to fill out the details. What is driving the size of this project, all the spaces and rooms? We have to make all of that determination. So the first thing we're going to do is determine the space needs for this facility, both those needs for today and what the needs would be 20 years into the future. The next thing we're going to do with your department is we're going to look at how all the pieces fit together. We don't want to just reinvent what they already have. We want to look at common policing models and put them together in a way that their building works very functionally efficient for them. We, we jumped to the very end. Maybe, maybe somebody wished that. Okay, so we, once we look at how all the pieces go together, well, and before I advance, I want to say, when we do the programming, here's how we go about it. We actually work with the department, with police managers. Any of you that want to are welcome to sit in on it. I will tell you, it's kind of a tedious process because we're going to kind of guide them through the process based on understanding how they operate and giving them ideas of how the building can be designed to meet their operational requirements. So this is not done in a vacuum. It's done with the users of the facility, with us guiding them to... It's done with the users of the facility, with us guiding them to good design standards. We're going to apply our experience, but it's always going to be about owner-driven goals. It has to be based on what the department and your community needs, not what we want. We're there to empower them to make good decisions for their facility by guiding them, by giving them the pros and cons with every issue that we talk about in the design. The other thing we're going to do is, once we start looking at, once we have the space defined, we have the pieces kind of organized, how they fit together, we'll start looking at how the building stacks. Is it a one-story building? Is it a two-story building? How it's used on the site? So, at this point in time, we will have kind of this foundation of what this building's going to be. And then we will start looking at cost. Again, I recognize you've got some cost numbers already established, but we've got to put everything together based on their needs to fit in that budget that you have today. So, cost establishment is not about changing the numbers that have already been developed. It's about making sure that all the pieces, all the things that need to go into this facility, fit within the budget that's already been created. And obviously, we have to get the cost correct early. Nobody wants to hear the term "cost overruns," "budget overruns." Nothing's probably more important to a community than the cost of these projects. And the questions will always arise. Is this much space necessary? We have to be able to show why this space is necessary, and we will. We'll compare it to communities built all around the country. We need to be able to answer the question, do we need to plan for the future? There's reasons why you plan these buildings for more than just today. And we will get into discussions of that. And then obviously, is this the right direction, both at the building level and at the site level? There will be discussions on all of those matters. Once that program is put together, that's the first time we start actually laying out the building. So, design is really putting all the pieces together. That's when you first start doing pretty drawings on paper. And usually what we'll do is we'll start with the functional establishment. What does the building look like? You'll see the layout of the building and how it lays out on the site. The other component in the design is aesthetic imagery development. And sometimes architects are just kind of turned loose with what the building's going to look like. We actually have an exercise that we employ and we can bring together a large group, whether it be department people, cross-section of the council, community members, and we can go through an exercise that we oftentimes use to get an idea of what does the community think their buildings, their governmental buildings should look like. So, we're prepared to engage you in that exercise. Once the design is done, then we get into the bid documents, which is just turning the design into a final set of drawings that a contractor can build from. That's where we're going to spend probably half of our time, is developing all the details, the blueprints, and specifications for a contractor to bid it. And then finally, construction administration, where we are your representative, along with Navigate, to work to make sure that the building, as we design it and as we put together the documents, is built by the contractor in accordance with everything that we all, the city, the department, and the design team all decided should go into the project. I'm just going to thumb through these. I already did a real quick thumb through, but I'm going to go back the other way now. And all I'm showing you here is just different types of buildings. They're not all, they're certainly not Taj Mahals. They're more functional than anything, but what I want to say is that every community is different, every building is different. We don't have any preconceived notions. What we do believe is this: our police buildings should not be fortresses. They should be welcoming and engaging with the public. And we want the appearance of them to look that way, to invite the public in, to interact with the community. We've always said that functionality is first and foremost, but along the way, if we're going to do a functional building, we believe that we do our best to stack the bricks pretty. In other words, we want the building to be something that the community and the department is proud of, but that it represents a good value. So, what are the benefits, as I close out here? These are the keys. I think all of us, when we choose a community to live in or to grow up in or to stay in, we look at certain things. The things that we look at are quality of life issues generally: streets, schools, jobs, housing costs, all of those types of things. But I would tell you that I don't think there's anything more important than our safety, especially today. And those safety services are delivered by the police, the fire department, by other city workers, but the police certainly have a big hand in the role of keeping a community safe. So, how do we help the police department deliver those services? We see the police cars on the street, but we oftentimes don't recognize that a lot of what goes on with preparing that department for the big picture, ongoing training as well as daily preparation, is related to the building. It's going on in the building. A lot of things go on related to the security of the people that come to see the police. There's evidence that is kept in there to successfully prosecute crimes. So, there's a lot of things that go into it. One of the biggest things that we're seeing today, the reason for having good facilities, is that it's getting harder and harder to keep and maintain patrol officers, police officers. And when you have facilities that they can take pride in, that show the community supports them, we know that retention and hiring goes up. So, the building is a huge benefit to your community and to your department. It does other things. We're going to increase the operational efficiency of the officers as they work, reduce liability, protect discreet information. So, there's a host of benefit to be had in this facility if it's designed right, and that's what we want to do, is help you all design it right. And I'll take any questions that you have.
How many facilities have you all designed or been involved with designing?
It's actually, it's actually over 300 now. Right now, at this particular time, we're doing about seven facilities in our offices right now.
Roughly, how many people do you have on your staff?
There's 10 of us.
What would you say is one of the most common mistakes that's made in police buildings? Maybe not the most, but at least one of.
Well, I will tell you, I think one of the biggest issues is probably the security systems because they're very complex. You're talking about, you're securing a building, but in a fire situation, people have to get out of the building. You're monitoring interviews. You're monitoring all the contact that goes on inside the building. You have door controls where doors are locked down. And all of this is tied into the computer system now. We no longer use lineups. Everything is videoed and an officer can pull it up on his computer. So, you have a lot of complex systems that all have to interface together, and I think one of the biggest challenges that architects have is getting all those pieces right and also working with the integrators to get it installed right. Even with us, it's complex because it's complex at the construction level and we have to carry out our instructions to even the person who's integrating everything. We do all of that in-house because it is so complicated and we're pretty successful at it. That's not to say there's not little bugs to be worked out along the way, but getting the basic design right. I think, you know, sometimes big things are forgotten. I have seen, fortunately, not with us, I've seen emergency generators that all of the systems were there, but the generator itself was not specified in one location or another, or it was called out as one thing in the drawings and something else in the specifications. And when you have conflicting things in your drawings, you'll have a contractor that every time will make the argument that he bid the cheapest route he could go, and usually that comes back on the owner. We do a quality control check that looks for all of those types of discrepancies in our drawings. And again, I want to say, I think because you do it by repetition, you get to the point where there's just not much you miss. We're not perfect, but we don't have very many big mistakes and very few even small mistakes, and I'll stand on that.
I got a couple more. You want to, or anybody else?
Okay, go ahead.
I think I've been in one of your buildings, and one of the things I was so impressed with, whether you designed it or not, but I believe you did, but it was the safety that was designed in working with people who have been arrested, from the time they get onto the property, to the Sally Court, to the holding cell, the safety for both the officer but and also for the person that's being arrested. I know you could talk for an hour about that, but could you just speak to it a little bit?
Well, I think the holding processing area is just one component, and there's multiple components in a law enforcement facility. And you should be able to feel the flow as you move through a well-designed law enforcement facility. And when you, if I just talk about the holding detention area, you kind of covered most of it. It's one of those areas that, believe it or not, it's fairly common for officers to arrest somebody, bring them to the building, take them out of the patrol car, start to move them into the building, and they get away. Handcuffs and all, the officer's chasing them again. Who's in danger there? The officer and that person that was already detained in the car, kind of settled in. So, what we want to do in a well-designed processing, holding intake area is create a situation where when the car comes in, everything's locked down. There is no opportunity. In fact, what you're doing is you're conveying to the detainee, don't even bother trying to get away because there is no opportunity to do that. And so, the environment is one to let them see that there's not an open door, everything is locked down, they're being monitored. So, that's what you're trying to do in good design. And you're correct. It's about not only the officer, but it's also about the detainee they're bringing into it. And that's one of a community's greatest liabilities, is that interaction that the officer has with a detainee. Nowadays, we use a lot of video cameras in our facilities because we monitor almost every location an officer comes into contact with anybody. It's just, it's a liability issue that protects the city. It protects the people who might bring a claim from unnecessarily bringing a claim. You know, they can be shown a video to kind of go through, well, this doesn't look the way this happened, so it might save a person under arrest some embarrassment. It might protect the city and the officer. But each piece of the building, how evidence moves through a building. It generally comes in the back door, it's logged in, it's secured, and it goes out the front door or another door when the public picks it up or it's otherwise disposed of by a judge. So, each component of the building should have a good flow, and we want to make sure that yours has a good flow and an efficient operation.
Move it one more step maybe even, yeah, from the ingress of when this process begins, but even in the cell themselves, if there are, the holding cells, not jail, but it's a holding cells. If there's a disturbance between, with the officer and the person that's being held, there are safety things there that are built in, really for both of them.
Yeah, there are.
Again, but maybe just something to help us.
Well, one of the things we typically do in a holding cell is we build the holding benches only about six inches off the floor. We generally don't put, I mean, some of these are little details. Keeping it six inches off the floor protects the person from getting injured, especially if a person's in the cell that's intoxicated. If they come off, if they fall off the bench, they don't have far to fall, six inches. We do poured concrete, it's more like a curb. We don't do the standard detention bunks that you see in the old-style cells because you can tie off anything you want to hang yourself in, and you don't have to break your neck to hang yourself. You just have to have a piece of string or a sheet to choke off the air in it, to get your weight on it. So, putting a bench six inches off the floor, it makes it pretty hard to tie anything on to it. These cells are all monitored. Even how air is supplied into the space and taken out of the space is done through special fixtures that can't be tampered with. We don't put drains in the floor because if you're in a cell, you have nothing but time. Sometimes if you're angry, your desire is to be ineritant to the police department. So, we put drains outside of the cells. Things are washed out into the drain in the hallway so they can't be tampered with. We prefer sliding doors to swinging doors because a swinging door is a weapon. You're looking at every handle, every, anything that protrudes into a space, you're looking to keep that smooth. So, if an officer gets into a scuffle, they don't get slammed into that, or they don't slam the detainee into it. We use a device called a tape switch that allows an officer, if they get into a scuffle, they can kick at a certain point on the floor and signal through the paging system, somebody to come and help them. When they kick this device, and it's kind of laid out in strips that allow them to, in almost any place they're in close proximity to a detainee, that if they go down on that floor, within about six feet is one of these strips that they can kick to set off. And it signals to the department through the paging system where that alarm came from. So, those are a few of the details.
You spoke to some of the things. I appreciate. I was just so thoroughly impressed with the ones that we did visit about the new things that are there. Our departments have been, since I've been acquainted with the city, have been in three different buildings. None of those have been designed as police departments. They have been make-do departments. And I think we're very fortunate that we haven't had some serious problems develop out of those over the years. And I've served on some other boards that we have built buildings and we have found specialists to build the kind of buildings we need. Do we pay for that? Yes, we do. Was it good money spent for us? I believe it was. And I think it's just time to design and build a police building that will serve our community well, one that we can be proud of. We don't need a cookie cutter, but I didn't see cookie cutters up there tonight.
No, no.
And we need one that fits popper buff, fits popper buff.
Absolutely.
Is that your intention?
Absolutely. I wish we had something that we could pull out of a drawer and say, will this one work for you?
I'd say you do a lot of work, not some money.
I've never seen that, and that's not our goal. There's a lot of common threads within police departments, and whether it's a department of 10 people or 1,000, and we've done both ends of that spectrum, there's commonality in all of those departments. But they're also all unique and different, and this will be about a design that works for this department and this community.
Can you briefly comment on the seismic and the vegetal strength of this building?
You're in a zone, and I will tell you, Mr. Mayor, I'm kind of the big-picture guy and my project managers are the detailed people with the codes, but the, obviously, as a 24/7, critical-use building, this building has to be designed to meet the seismic requirements. But it's not, it's not much worse than a lot of the portions of St. Louis. We just recently completed a project in O'Fallon, a suburb of St. Louis, and if I recall, it was a similar seismic zone. One of the things that's going to be unique about your facility that you may not have anticipated yet is all facilities after the 2015 International Building Code require a hardened shelter in the building. That hardened shelter is not a general-use shelter for the public, it's for the people that would be operating in that facility at the time of an emergency. So, we actually have kind of two hardening components. One is this shelter requirement, and the other is the seismic. this shelter requirement, and the other is the seismic requirement that's, that's dictated in this area. But I, a, a pretty large number of the projects we work on have, uh, have to meet a similar seismic requirement. Anytime, whenever you get into critical-use facilities, which this one is classified as, um, they jump up pretty quickly in terms of the seismic requirements and the, the structural integrity of the building that we have to meet.
Thank you. Any further questions from the council?
I don't have a question. I would just like to, uh, well, maybe I do, but I think he's actually covered all of it. I've had several citizens comment to me, and their comment was, "You know, a police station's nothing but an office building with a few extras." And I think you've covered that mostly tonight, but could you kind of expand on that comment?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot of perception about that. Um, I, I would say nothing could be further from the truth. I think if you went out and tried to find a, an office building and housed your police department in it, you would spend the rest of, uh, your lives trying to overcome the, the problems that they have within that facility. And, and yes, we have, we have discussed some of it. Uh, some of it is related to the building type, a building that is going to be one tenant in it for a period of maybe the next 70 to 100 years. That building is designed different than a lot of office buildings are. But the other thing is this, is when you start thinking about the functional side of a law enforcement facility, the first thing we're faced with is, we want to be inviting to the public, but at the same time, we have to create a secure place within the building. Most of the building inside is secure. The public is, we want to get them to the, to the right person in the facility, and we want to get them there easily by clearly identifying where the entry is, by making it a comfortable location as they come inside. But they're, they're held right there. Uh, one of the things that you'll find in, in a, in a law enforcement building that is unlike an office building are the people that are coming into the facility. Some people are just coming in to get an incident report, some people are coming in to report abuse or, or a crime committed against them. When they walk up to the, to the records or a desk officer and want to talk about what has happened to them, they don't want people around them hearing their discreet conversations. So from the very get-go, a well-designed police building is going to take into account what types of people are coming into that building and protecting the discreet information that they have, that they're wanting to share with a, a department member. From there, that's the easiest part of the building. From there, once you start getting into the patrol functions, the detective functions, there's, there's a lot of that that is designed around a high-demand use period where you have a, moving a lot of people through the building quickly. But the thing, where things generally get more difficult is how evidence flows through the building, how you protect that, that evidence, uh, how detainees move through the building and how you protect them. There's, there's, so there's, there's a lot of functional aspects of a facility that make it quite unique from an office building. I, I will tell you this, we're not, we're not opposed to renovating buildings, but I, it, to the best of my understanding right now, the plans are for a new building. You've kind of been down that road. And I can tell you, we've done a lot of studies over, over my lifetime where we were looking at, here's what a new building will take and what it will cost, because it's fairly easy to figure that. And the only way you can determine if an existing building is feasible for renovation is to compare it to what was the cost of that new building we're going to build to achieve the same types of function. And we do this over and over and over. It's hard to find a building that you can renovate for the same cost a- as, as building new. And I know people have difficult times understanding that, but part of the problem is this. When you buy almost any building, it's not designed for the intent of a police facility. So when you buy it, maybe the air conditioning systems and the electrical power requirements and the plumbing, maybe nothing is going to suit your needs. So, a lot of what you bought gets torn out to be replaced to accommodate the needs of the law enforcement department. Uh, I, I heard the discussion of, of building up. That's, that's a common scenario. Let's look at building on top of something. Very few buildings get designed to be built on top of. Uh, a parking garage might be one of your best options because usually they're, they're pretty solid. But most of the time, there's a whole host of things that keep you from, from building on top of something that wasn't specifically designed for that purpose. So, that's just one form of looking at finding a building and renovating it. Uh, it, they're a unique building, and it, you just, when you get into the details, you start realizing all the reasons why you can rarely take an office building or, or any type of building and make it work well for you. Um, almost the only thing you, the best thing you get out of an existing building is you're hoping that the shell of the building is good. And here, here's the other, here's the other thing that has changed today, that has made it even harder. The energy codes are designed such that almost any building that you bought to renovate, those walls that you bought are going to be nothing but the inside of a sandwich because we're going to have to effectively build a new wall on the outside and the inside just to meet the energy codes.
Have any questions from the audience? Mr. Durbin?
I want to challenge you on the parking garage issues. Uh, my reference was not to build on top of the parking garage, but was to demo whatever level had to be. So if you're starting out with a level foundation, what would be the difference? Other than, you're restricted to the base of that, the size of it.
And, and I, I wasn't, I wasn't challenging that. I was saying, that's a common theme to build up, and generally speaking, you can't build up. But even clearing a pad, we're doing a project in Casper, Wyoming right now. They had the opportunity to buy a Sears building i- in a shopping mall, single-story building throughout. The cost of changing that floor to get all the plumbing fixtures and everything that goes below the grade was going to be, is, was one of the excessive costs. I, I wouldn't, I would not challenge you on the details of renovating that particular project without knowing all the particulars. I'm kind of going-
And that would be my issue as well. And, and my, my whole statement was that if it had to be demoed down to bare earth, the location we already own, and that's an amount of money that could be put into the project rather than buying another piece of property, was my remarks. But as far as where the project ends up, if we end up on top of a parking garage, the only restriction I see, if we leveled the top of the parking garage, the foundation square is the only restriction that you would be for, as opposed for a new building.
Yeah, the only thing I could say is I don't have any of the information, and, and I wasn't challenging your proposal to that. I, it just made me think of that, it's a common, that's a common theme that we hear.
I still want us locked in to just, it has to be this way or that way. And, you know, when I'm saying, we, we, we are Papa Bluff, we should be able to make a decision that everybody can agree with. And, you know, I, I don't want to lock you out, and, you know, and, uh, I would welcome, you know, a new construction over any other thing. I don't want to bring in a modular building and say, "You have to work here." You know, your project would definitely be a better project for the city of Papa Bluff.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from the audience?
I just wanted to make one more comment. Uh, I'm glad Councilman Black brought up the issues that he did, and Mr. Estes answered them, but, you know, the criminal element police department deals with today is not completely different, but a lot different than it was 10 years ago, especially in Papa Bluff. I mean, we're dealing with gang shootings. They bring people in to book them and put them in a holding cell that are hyped up on drugs, and they're dangerous. And 10 or 15 years ago, we didn't see that. And, you know, as much safety and, uh, we can put in this building for our officers and the public, and the criminals is, that's what we need to do, so.
Any further comments from, from the council? Hearing now, the chair will entertain a motion to move this to the March 16th voting session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel.
While you gentlemen are doing that, we're going to proceed. Item B. The city council will discuss a recommendation authorizing the mayor to enter into a loan agreement with First Midwest Bank of Papa Bluff for a short-term loan for the acquisition of real estate along Shelby Road in Papa Bluff for the construction of a police station. Authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary and appropriate to secure the, the loan from First Midwest Bank, and further to execute all documents necessary and appropriate acquire said property, to acquire said property by, by partial gift and purchase from First Missouri State Bank of Papa Bluff. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and the public. Uh, as you all know, we passed an ordinance at the last meeting, uh, basically the same thing, but, uh, First Missouri State Bank, who is the donor and seller, and First Midwest Bank, who is the lender, have, uh, come to ask, come to us and asked us to change the ordinance to match the loan documents to a direct, uh, a direct loan instead of a lease-purchase agreement. Lease-purchase agreement, uh, creates, uh, problems really for both banks, and, uh, this will just be better for everybody, including the city, to change the ordinance.
Make the motion pass it tonight's voting session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item C. The city council will discuss a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding an option and lease agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. Mr. Bob?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this project originally started with the, uh, I'll call it the tenant wanting to attach to an existing structure we had at the White Oak facility. It was determined we couldn't handle the loading that they were wanting to put on it, so the next question, "Well, can we lease space from you?" Well, we've already got a tower at White Oak, so this would be another tower on the White Oak property site. So this agreement is for the lease of 3,600 square feet of property located on the north side of County Road 550 for the purpose of installing, operating, and maintaining a communication facility and other improvements. Initial term will be five years with the option of three successive automatic five-year options to renew. Uh, the tenant will pay a sum of $1,000 within 90 days of the effective date, and on the first day of each month following, 700 per month. After five years, if the agreement is renewed, the rent will increase by seven and a half percent over the rent paid during the previous five years. Uh, I reached out to Mr. Carl Lumley, who we use in, for legal help, to put this agreement together, and I feel this agreement will benefit citizens of Papa Bluff, uh, through better communications to this area. I know, uh, Mr. Sprague is also here, representing Singular Wireless PCS. If there's any questions I can't answer, I'm sure he is more than happy to come up here and answer any of them.
Anyone have any questions for him?
Make the motion pass it to the March 16th voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item D. The city council will consider a proposal for the police union contract. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, we went back to the, uh, the union representative and the employees that represent the, uh, police department, the patrol officers, and, uh, explained to them that in order to get this passed, we needed, uh, the change on the employee benefits to match the ordinance that council passed several months ago. So what they have put in here is, uh, to correct that, it says for regular employees hired after August 31st of 2019, the city shall pay 100% of the cost of premium for the individual plan, which is what the ordinance says, for the employee, and 0% for dependent, which means spouse, child, or family coverage plan. And a new employee should be covered after one month, one full month of, uh, service to the city. That's what our current, current ordinance says. The other item was on benefits also. Well, let me go back a minute. They also put in here, uh, "Should the city council endeavor to enact an ordinance following the effective date of this agreement, and sudden, such ordinance restores, in part, or all of the city's payment of dependent coverage for employees hired after August 31st, then this section shall automatically be amended to reflect the ordinance." Uh, same thing with the retiree insurance. Uh, the ordinance we passed several months ago, uh, anybody hired after August 31st, the city would not pay for retiree insurance, and, uh, they've changed this to match the ordinance also. And other than, uh, s- a few effective dates and some changes on the, uh, table of contents, uh, the police department union actually met today and voted to approve on their side, so, uh, I'm recommending that we pass this to the voting session on the 16th.
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to see that we have moved forward, and I appreciate the, the work that all involved have done that, and the, and the understanding of the ordinances that we have to bring that contract into compliance with, with those involved. And with that, then I make a motion that we pass it to the March 16th voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item E. The city council will discuss a recommendation to abandon certain right-of-way on a portion of the old Shannon Drive and accepting a conveyance, a conveyance of a new ri- right-of-way for Shannon Drive at the intersection of Shannon Drive and Baron Road in the City of Papa Bluff. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, sir. Our, uh, street superintendent, uh, Jerry Lawson, came to me, I don't know, last year sometime, and we had drainage issues on, uh, Shannon Drive hitting Baron Road, and going across the road, and going down the driveway, the person that lived across from there, and then flowing into his garage. Uh, it's a very, it was a very bad, dangerous intersection also, because it's right at the top of a hill. Uh, he was thinking about cutting all that out and putting this new drainage in, and, which would still leave a dangerous intersection. So I said, "Well, look at, you know, maybe moving, straightening out the road and just moving the roadbed over." So we approached the church, or he did, street department did, and, uh, came to an agreement on swapping land. We'd moved the road over, they would take up the old road for, to help with their parking, their congregation's grown quite a bit, and I've had a lot of comments from people that live in that area, how much better and safer that intersection is now. And, street department did that whole project themselves and saved us quite a bit of money, and, uh, but this is just to take care of, clean up an item of swapping the land for their property and ours for theirs, so.
Certainly was a win-win project, both for all persons involved there, the church, the neighbors, and certainly one of the, it was an intersection that from time to time, there were accidents because of the site view line. Uh, make the motion to pass that to tonight's voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Item eight. Action required items. AA Bill Number 8214. The city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a loan agreement with First Midwest Bank of Papa Bluff for, for a short-term loan for the acquisition of real estate along Shelby Road in Papa Bluff for the construction of a police station. Authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary and appropriate to secure the loan from First Mid- Midwest Bank, and further to execute all documents necessary and appropriate to acquire said property by partial gift and purchase from First Missouri State Bank. to acquire said property by partial gift and purchase from First Missouri State Bank.
Motion for first reading. Sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Councilor Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with First Midwest Bank of Papa Bluff for a short-term loan for the acquisition of the real estate along Shelby Road in Papa Bluff for the construction of a police station. Authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary and appropriate to secure the loan from First Midwest Bank, and further authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary and appropriate to acquire said property by partial gift and purchase from First Missouri State Bank of Papa Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8214. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Councilor Richardson?
An authorize, an, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with First Midwest Bank of Papa Bluff for a short-term loan for the acquisition of the real estate along Shelby Road in Papa Bluff for the construction of a police station. Authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary and appropriate to secure the loan from First Midwest Bank, and further authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary and appropriate to acquire said property by partial gift and purchase from First Missouri State Bank of Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGerris?
No.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Bill Number 8214 is adopted. Item BB, Bill Number 8215. The city council will take action on an ordinance abandoning, abandoning certain right-of-way on a portion of Old Shannon Drive and accepting a conveyance of new right-of-way for Shannon Drive at the intersection of Shannon Drive and Baron Road in the City of Papa Bluff.
Motion for first reading of Bill 8215. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Councilor Richardson?
An ordinance realigning a portion of Shannon Drive in Papa Bluff by abandoning an existing right-of-way and accepting a new right-of-way from the West Side Church of God at 2807 Shannon Drive in Papa Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill, a break. 215.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Councilor Richardson?
An ordinance realigning a portion of Shannon Drive in Papa Bluff by abandoning an existing right-of-way and accepting a new right-of-way from the West Side Church of God at 2807 Shannon Drive in Papa Bluff.
Motion for adoption of Bill 8215. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Bill Number, Bill Number 8215 is adopted. Item CC, Resolution Number 1918. The city council will take action on a resolution, the city, for, bear with me. The city council will take action on a resolution with respect to the annexation of certain unincorporated area of the City of Papa Bluff, such property being located at 3392 Canal Boulevard owned by Score LLC.
Motion for the reading of Resolution Number 1918.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry.
No evidence.
No, no hand ready. Councilor Richardson?
A resolution with respect to the annexation of a certain unincorporated area of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, such property being located at 3392 Canal Boulevard and owned by Score LLC.
Motion for second reading. Excuse me. It's a resolution.
To adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Resolution Number 1918 is adopted. Item DD. The city council of the City of Papa Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the open meetings law in Section 610. Point 21, point 1, point 2, point 3, point 9, point 11, point 12, point 13, and point 14 revised statute of Missouri following the city manager's report.
Make the motion move in a closed session following the city manager's report.
Second.
Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parsons?
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilman Black?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Well, wasn't it a beautiful day in Papa Bluff today?
Lovely, lovely day.
Sunny, seventy degrees, and we're paying for it tonight because I'm about to burn up. But changing this system here from heat to air is a, it's a complex situation, so we only, we only do it once or twice a year, so I apologize if anybody's overheated because I am, because of the weather. Just a couple items, when you all leave tonight, if the arena's still lit up some, you can see piles of dirt dumped on the floor out there. This weekend is the Bulls and Vans sponsored by PB Realty, so if you don't have anything to do this weekend, please come out and view that. It always amazes me that we can dump dirt in there and have bulls and horses and everything else. And I know it's a mess to clean up when they do, but it's worth it, so. One other item, the, we've talked about the tunnel under Broadway and Main Street, that basically those two bridges, especially the one on Broadway, was deteriorating rapidly and posed a danger to any heavy vehicles. We did put a load limit on it probably about a year ago and asked the fire trucks to please not go up that road and bus, school buses. We sent out for bids for a bridge, what I would call a bridge over Broadway, came in at around $230,000, really about $100,000, less, more than what we thought it might. Street Department at that point has hauled dirt in from a person that owns dirt on Shelby Road. Dirt was donated. They filled all that in, they've got it leveled with Broadway Street right now. It's got gravel on there, and it will probably stay there, stay that way for about a year to allow for settling and our hopes, I think in 2021, is to completely overlay that street from Business 60 up to Main Street, so that will make that clear much smoother. The Main Street side is not as in bad as condition as the Broadway, so at some point though, we will do the same over there. You know, what I'm happy to say is, instead of spending $230,000, the only amount we're out right now, like I said, we had free dirt, we've paid for some gravel. Our dump trucks, street department dump trucks hauled all the dirt and the gravel, so money-wise, all we're out is labor and gravel material and the gas for the dump trucks and the wear and tear of the dump trucks, but the street department guys never get enough recognition, and they did a great job. They did it in less than a week, and you know, hats off to them. They work hard for us and appreciate it.
Thank you, Street Department.
And saved us a ton of money and, especially, if you look at two bridges, that's $460,000 to $500,000, and we'll probably be lucky if we spend $25,000 on all of it, so. That's all I have.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll take a five-minute break. And note, five minutes, folks.
So move.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We adjourn.
Yep. Yep.